Mrs. Marmian?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Stotts? All right, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, there is no executive session at this time. So we're going to move right into 3.01 for the budget presentation with Dr. McDowell and Mrs. Coleman.
Okay, so good evening for all who are in attendance. We are presenting the 2324 budget. Our theme moving into this upcoming school year will be continuing our acceleration. When we started coming back from the pandemic, we knew that the learning acceleration efforts would be a three to five-year endeavor. We are now entering into year three. And so we'll be continuing with our focus of accelerating. And what we have prepared for you... To keep us grounded, we always like to start with our vision and mission. And so the reason why we're here is to make sure that we are providing an inspiring and challenging education for every student and that ultimately we want to make sure that we are embracing the diversity of our cultures and building capacity and confidence and perseverance in every student. So what you see here is projected enrollment. And so one of the positives is Oakland is now becoming more of a destination borough. And so we are seeing increases in enrollment because families want to come here. So we're seeing younger families move into Oakland. And we're seeing a little bit of exodus at the high school level, but traditionally that's a normal range at the high school level for varying reasons. And so from last year to this year, we see a net positive increase of 28 students. And so when you look at your breakdown, we're remaining consistent in terms of preschool. We continue to receive the preschool expansion grant. And so that's being maintained through grant funds. We're seeing the largest level of increase at the elementary level here in this facility with 35 children. We're seeing a slight increase at middle school and then a modest drop off at high school for a net increase of 28 children. So to talk us through all of the finance, our lovely Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations will take us through the finance.
We're low tech. So Oakland, our revenues are just made up of a few pots of money. Fund balance, which is basically savings from the prior year budget above 2%. The state allows us to keep 2% of expended balances, basically in a savings account. Anything above 2% we give back to the taxpayers every year in the form of tax relief as revenue towards the budget. So that this year, that's $757,710. Local tax levy of $5,994,215. And your tax levy makes up just under 58% of the total revenue for Oakland. State aid, we did see an increase this year, but state aid is $3,571,294. So state aid's only about 34% in Oakland. So yes, we did get an increase in state aid, but you know, only about 30 cents on the dollar is state aid in Oakland. Semi Medicaid, which is it's a state mandated program for children that are in special services. If they are eligible for the semi Medicaid program, there's a bunch of paperwork that we put in for each year so that we can get reimbursed by the federal government. That's about $11,000. And then miscellaneous revenues, that makes up that's the rent that Collingswood pays for the preschool classrooms that they occupy upstairs and basically interest and any monies that we get in one of those refund from our GIPS make up for $46,000. So total budget, total revenue, $10,381,805. Here's your little pot, just like little picture. Some people are, you know, learn visually, but you can see local taxes make up the lion's share of Oakland's budget. District expenditures, 85% of our budget is in the areas of instruction. And when I say that, it includes this building. It also includes tuition that you pay out to other districts like Collingswood and your private schools for disabled. Student services, that would be your child study team services, guidance services, any related services are in this line for $532. Facilities, that would be your maintenance line items as well as the cost of the facility. So your gas or electric and then administrative costs of $464. So instructions, 85% of your budget and admins coming in at 4.5% of your budget. Sorry, this is loading so strange. Again, group instruction being 85%. Here's your year over year. No, embarrassing, so last year's tax levy was $5,603,625. The 2324 tax levy, $5,994,215. The difference is $390,590. The average increase is $149 on the average home assessed at $165,39. And just, this might be confusing, but for clarifying purposes, of your total property tax bill, the schools are 46% of your total bill. We're not the whole bill. Included in your tax bill is also the borough taxes and county taxes.
So it's important for us to make sure that we are aligning our investments with our priorities. And so district priority number one is making sure that we're supporting our equity initiatives as well as learning acceleration year three. And so this is making sure that we meet the needs of every learner. So when we talk about equity, equity is ensuring that every child gets what they need to be successful or to reach the standard. Adjusting to the evolving needs of our students and then including lessons learned from the pandemic. And so one of the things that Oakland has been able to do due to its staff is to continually evolve in its instructional practice based on what we're seeing in the classroom. And so we are very fortunate to have teachers that are reflective, coachable, and malleable. And so what that means is, is that when we see the need to make changes, we do. When we see that something is not working in moving our children forward, we make the necessary adjustment. And so that's part of our priority. Making sure that we continue to build on professional learning communities. Professional learning communities simply are opportunities for our teachers to come together, to talk about kits, to talk about instruction, to learn from each other, and to help inform their planning so that we all get better. Increasing the effectiveness and the quality of professional development. This is part of our responsibility to treat our educators as professionals and to continue to invest in their professional growth. Addressing the curriculum shifts through interdisciplinary learning. And so students today are being asked to do different things. And so we used to be very siloed in content. Now, through an interdisciplinary approach, students have to be able to apply multiple concepts from multiple subject areas and apply them in the real world. Reinforce student support. This is academics, school culture, and then mental health. We are very fortunate that the school leadership team and this board made the decision several years ago, pre-pandemic, to make sure that we had sufficient health services as well as a social worker on campus. Many schools within this state do not have those two critical resources. And so we want to make sure that we're continuing to invest in those and support those professionals on campus. And then also to build capacity for inclusive classrooms. And so one of the things that our district and all districts are getting hit with is private tuition. And so whenever we have to send children out, we lose control over the cost because cost is highly variable and we are subject to whoever the service provider is. And so as we continue to build capacity for more inclusive classrooms, we can keep more students in district and then we can control some of those costs, but we can also have direct influence over positive student outcomes. And so we want to continue investing in that work. So what are those investments? Learning acceleration teachers. Our instructional model here in Oakland is small group instruction and targeted intervention for students who need a little bit more. And so making sure that we have our learning acceleration teachers and that we're also participating in the MTSS process, which is a tiered system of support. And so what that simply means is, is that when students aren't responding to primary instruction, they're not responding to small group instruction, those specific students get exactly what they need, which would be an additional layer of support from classroom teachers. Full-time teacher. This was a big win for us. We wanted to make sure that we were able to sustain an Oakland choir and band program and to be able to provide general music to all Oakland students. One of the new things is the Amplify tool. So this is a digital platform that allows us to track and monitor progress as it relates with English and literacy. And so we're going to continue with that tool. The Into Math program helps us to better align math instruction to state standards and gives us benchmark assessment tools so that we can also measure and track progress, which is an indicator of how well our students are going to do in the areas of growth with state-level assessments at the end of the year. And so our emphasis for the last several years has not been an emphasis on status. Status takes time to change. What we've really been focused on is growth. And so we've been pushing our educators to focus on a year and a half's worth of growth because we know that when summer comes, there's going to be summer slide. So if we focus on a year and a half's worth of growth, we can ensure that every student grows at least a year. Some will grow more, some may grow a little less, but so that's our goal. And so in addition to those investments around learning acceleration, we're going to continue to refine and improve our social emotional learning program. We know that when students have positive relationships and they have meaningful connections on campus, they learn more, they do better, they're more fulfilled, and it increases satisfaction on campus. And so we want to make sure that we have common language and that we're equipping students with the tools to be able to overcome challenges that may contribute to academic frustration and a lack of achievement. Maintaining wraparound services for students and families as well as staff. One of the positive investments that the board made last year was our employee assistance program. And so the employee assistance program is helping the adults in the building deal with some of the ramifications of the pandemic in the areas of mental health in a confidential way, in a private way. We send monthly updates and opportunities and additional resources, but that level of investment we know is paying dividends for our staff that we inadvertently forgot while we were so focused on our students' mental health and well. And so we want to continue with that investment. Instructional resources, we're doing a lot and it is paying dividends, but we want to continue to focus in math, reading, writing, and science by ensuring that our staff have the tools and the supplies for full implementation of our academic program and have the flexibility for some of the extracurricular and the extra or supplemental work that is needed for some students. Special education, we're maintaining our high-quality programs, our self-contained classes, our resource, our push-in, our supplemental support, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and counseling. We're maintaining all of those services for our students here in Oakland as well as improvements to compensation for our instructional aides who are working in those classrooms. And so we're going to continue with those investments. District priority number two is going to be a consistent one. It's really supporting our infrastructure. This is a beautiful building. And it will remain a beautiful building as long as we continue to provide routine maintenance and we don't lag in our efforts. And this board and this community has been pretty resolved and pretty consistent in making sure that we maintain this facility. And so we're going to continue making sure that routine maintenance is coming up and that we're properly inspecting all of our items. And we're constantly asking the question, how can we make smart improvements that pay long-term dividends for this facility? And so we want to make sure we also provide appropriate workspace for staff. We want to recapture educational spaces in our schools so that students are receiving the maximum benefit. We want to continue to support our technology infrastructure because in a one-to-one computing environment, we know how important technology is to our students for anywhere, anytime learning. And we want to make sure that we're in front of facility improvements rather than behind. Case in point, some of our colleagues across the river are having to close schools due to asbestos and put children back in remote learning, which is not something we ever want to go back to. And so how are we supporting that infrastructure? We continue to make sure that routine maintenance is a priority and it is a focus within our budget because it aligns with our long-term plan. And so when we talk about Vision 2026, Vision 2026 is not waiting till 2026 to do something. It's that we've identified some things that we want to manifest and be our reality by the time we get to 2026. And so when we think about how that relates to infrastructure, we want schools that meet the demands of today's need for our students. And that means strategic investments over a long period of time. Continued investment in our one-to-one Chromebook initiative. And so the annual refresh of our student devices, that's also included in this budget. Targeted professional development and continued investment in our Google platform, which is the learning platform that teachers are using to engage with students, to hold lessons, and communicate with families. In addition to investments in cybersecurity and internet safety. And so what we have seen along the way is that this is an area of growth. Cybersecurity unfortunately has become a necessary evil because we are protecting the data of students and staff. And our network administrator is busy every single day. Because schools are vulnerable areas because many school districts don't have network managers maintaining the systems and warding off the attacks for folks to be able to steal data. We also see, especially in larger systems, ransomware. And this is where hackers will come in. They will shut down your network and your system in exchange for cash payment. And so making sure that our systems and our infrastructure are able to ward off or fight against some of those are investments that we will continue to make. And then we also want to make sure that we are using our website or maximizing utilization of our website. We want to, we will be releasing a communications plan shortly. We want to begin digging a little bit deeper through the utilization of social media. We want to continue to make improvements in our website. And we want to figure out better ways to communicate with a much broader group of Oakland residents and families about all the great things that are taking place here in this building. And so how are we making smart decisions, but also how are we ensuring that we are being good stewards of public dollars? And so we are in insurance funds. Insurance funds allow us to get more at a better price because we're negotiating differently. And then there are also additional cost savings in the event that there's a profit sharing or return of dividends by participating in these insurance funds. And so we continue to benefit from some of those. And so when we think about our health insurance, because we are in a health insurance fund, we saw a modest increase in our insurance payments. If we had been in the state health plan, we would have been paying triple the level of increase. And so they saw about a 15% increase from last year to this year. And we saw about a 5% increase. And so there is value by making sure that we are being good stewards. Utility consortium, same thing. When we're trying to buy energy, we want to make sure that we're not overpaying. And so being in the consortium allows us to get levels of service at a cheaper operational cost. Shared services between Collingswood, between administration, business services, child study team, maintenance and technology support. There is a pretty significant cost savings associated with that partnership. Also transportation, the use of the bus for the vocational technical program as well as class trips. And then trash removal through Public Works. And ultimately, the biggest investment actually comes from our ability to provide free preschool. The return on investment for having high-quality preschool is about $1 to $7 in the local economy. And so because we take advantage of the preschool expansion grant, there will be long-term positive dividends that pay off over time by our students being involved in two years of high-quality preschool. And so we want to continue to strengthen early childhood education in Oakland because it helps put our students ahead. And we now are opening the floor for questions.
I have a question for, I guess, Ms. Bolden. Only because we had a presentation about shared tech services about six months ago. So I just wondered if there was, you know, kind of any update on how things are going with that? I mean, if we're expanding Chromebook one-to-one initiatives and things like that. I just remember that there was, you know, we were still, there was a backlog. There was an issue with staffing on the tech services, so just curious.
I don't have any questions, but I have a few comments. Would you rather have them now or...? Oh, okay. I wrote a lot down to make sure I don't forget anything, which I'll probably do anyway. But I'm honestly appalled by the budget we're presenting tonight. After receiving an additional $554,000 of state aid, we still felt it necessary to increase the budget by 7% for approximately $140 per year on the average house. This will be in addition to the approximately $120 increase in municipal taxes. And this is the average home. I don't know anybody in Oakland that owns the average home. They're all above average, so you can assume that those numbers are going to be significantly higher. I think they're looking at an increase for most people in Oakland of over $300 a year, which I think is absurd. The board doesn't receive a detailed breakdown of our expenditures. We only get broad classifications. We need to ask questions, but not getting a complete breakdown. And that's a bit of a bear, I admit that, so that's a potential problem. But we have to ask questions. I believe that a budget of over $11 million, there are certainly a number of areas that warrant some kind of detailed review. While I would never propose a reduction in teaching staff, there may be other areas of potential savings. We probably have more employees that are not teachers than are teachers. Are all of those positions absolutely necessary? Is a 7% increase necessary, especially this year when we received significant additional funds? If we hadn't received the extra $554,000 and we were limited to a 2% increase, what would we have cut out of this budget? What would we have done with that? That's a terrible thought. But I don't think it would have affected us. I think Bethan would have found ways to reduce the budget to get into that thing. Why not do that anyway? Why do we have to spend the money? You know, we know we have this pot of money. Now we're going to make our expenditures equal that pot of money. And I think that's what's happened and I object to that greatly. The population increase that Dr. McDowell showed on the screen, the increase in students is in this school. We have six grades in this school, 35 students, six grades. That's six kids per grade. And we have two classes in each grade, so that's three kids in each one. We can increase 35 students in this school and it doesn't cost us a dime. A few more pencils maybe, but that's about it. So saying that we need to increase for increased population is just not correct. Where it does cost us money is at the high school and the middle school where we're paying tuition. And that's actually down three students. So we're saving $48,000 next year by that reduction, assuming those numbers hold. Now bear with me just a second, I've lost myself. No, that's about it. I, oh, no, a little bit more. The general fund, which is the bulk of the budget. And the figures I'm using, I actually agree with Bethan. We had the same numbers, which in my case doesn't always happen. But the general fund increased 14.3%. 14.3%. The state says it should increase 2%. So we're 12.3% over what the state thinks it should be. And that gives you your 7% tax increase. And that gives you your 7% tax increase, and the tax increase is lower because we've got $554,000 of additional money. So I don't think it's a good budget. It's a balanced budget, it's a legal budget, it complies with all of the state laws, state requirements, it does that, but I think we're spending a lot more money than we need to, and we're putting on the backs of the citizens of Oakland who both came out tonight to have some kind of comment or to at least listen. And that's a problem. For me, that's a problem. You know, I guess the only thing I have left to do at this point is put my house up for sale. It's getting very expensive to live in Oakland. Collingswood's increased, Collingswood tries to keep their tax increase to under $100, and they're usually very effective in doing that. Why can't Oakland do the same thing? What's different in Oakland that's not in Collingswood?
So I think we also need to, we also need to be honest. Collingswood is experiencing a multimillion-dollar budget challenge, multimillion-dollar gap. And so with the inability to be able to fund it, which the budget that will, Collingswood will be presenting, there will be reductions. Those reductions are going to be thoughtful, and they will hopefully not include physical bodies, because traditionally we have been able to use attrition and operational efficiencies. There are operational non-negotiables with the state budget. And so the largest level of increase came in the form of tuition. And so we, the reason why the state gave the $554,000 is because there are more students. And so that only covers a percentage of the actual cost to educate students. And so we need to make sure that we're talking real numbers and real reasons. We can't say out one side that we don't want to cut teachers, but we don't have other revenue streams in order to be able to adjust those. And so we can't say that we're okay with staffing, and in terms of staffing, the only individuals that are in this building that are not connected to classroom instruction are the, that are in the general fund are the principal, two secretaries, and two secretaries. Everybody else is actually providing classroom level of instruction.
But they're not teachers.
Or special education services. They are teachers.
They're aides or teachers.
We're not even talking about the aides. We're talking about the staff members in this building. We have a contract for instructional assistance. They are not our employees. We have a contract with them to provide services as determined by their IEP, so that's student services. Staff members in this building, there are three individuals in the general fund that are not teachers. Everybody else are teachers.
Okay, do we pay, we pay a premium for, or we pay a cost for the contracted service aides? Pardon?
They're part of student services. Student services was only 5% versus the instruction, which was 85%. So even if they're being paid from that, it's not significant.
We have a lot of not significant items in the budget. If you could cut $20,000 out of each line or a number of line items, you could save enough money to get down to a 2% increase. And I admit Collingswood has some significant problems, but Collingswood is able to solve those problems or apparently is able to solve those problems, their budget hasn't been finalized yet, but it doesn't appear that they're going to have to lay off any teachers or anyone else.
I just want to, I know I've made this comment previously several times, I'll make it again. Yes, we saw an increase in state aid of $554,000. Your tuition, your legally obligated tuition that we are paying out went up by 1.1 million. So that money was spent the second we got it. And again, these are for children living in Oakland, attending Oakland schools, and out of district and attending Collingswood. The biggest jump came the ninth graders switching over to the high school tuition rate. It was a sizable jump in tuition. But I just wanted to clarify, there's not pockets of money in the budget to be cut. The biggest jump, as everybody can see from my expenditures, again, everything will be published tomorrow, but tuition went up by 1.1 million dollars, just by more kids and give them more, the ninth graders go into the high school at the higher high school rate. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's true. The increase in tuition at the high school was about, probably about $400,000.
Is that before the 10 less students? Because there's 10 in the, per pupil, right?
Yes. I don't know the answer to that one, I'm sorry.
That's like just, that's all grades, including special ed, that enrollment with negative 10 you saw, but ninth grade actually saw an increase of a dozen kids. If you remember, over the summer, we were having these discussions, we were negotiating moving the ninth graders to the high school tuition rate. So ninth grade actually saw a bump, and then everybody's getting applied the $15,000 some odd tuition rate. So you guys had quite a jump in tuition this year. So it was a hurdle, we met it, but luckily, as I said, luckily, we did get, the state did recognize that there's more children attending Oakland, so they did give us aid.
And now remember, the kids in Oakland, it's not a big expense. Adding students in this building is not a big expense. It could be. I mean, if we had the need for another classroom, yeah, that's an expense, but adding 35 students over six grades is not going to add a second, or a third classroom in each grade level. So it's, there is an increase in tuition, a lot in Collingswood, but as I say, that increase in state aid will more than cover that. The other tuition items, we've been paying anyway.
It didn't cover it though. It was a fraction of it.
I'm sorry?
It didn't cover, the increase in state aid was a fraction of what the tuition increase was.
Of the 1.1 million?
Yes.
The Collingswood tuition increase was about $400,000.
If the tuition went up 1.1 million dollars.
That's all tuition, so that's your private school for the disabled, that's your out-of-district children, that's your county, they all went up. Added district tuition, county vocational, Collingswood High School, all areas in tuition, everybody went up.
Everything is covering an Oakland kid.
Yeah. So that's in total, the 1.1 million.
500 towards that. So, yeah, it's not, it didn't cover tuition, it covered a fraction of the overall tuition. I think that's what's missing, the point that's missing.
Yeah, we should have asked questions about why the other tuitions went up. What are the other tuitions?
Everything went up. Special ed schools, private, you know, the special needs schools, I mean, we have kids who have to go to special programs for whatever, their tuition goes up. It's not just going to Collingswood. That's the point, that it's everywhere.
Yeah, I understand that.
Those rates are approved by the state too. So like, I can't, those rates are approved by the state, I can't negotiate with the private schools for the disabled.
Yeah, and we have to pay busing for a lot of our students too. So that's all that's in there, but we're doing that right now.
We get more kids that come in and cost more, then we can't not pay that.
But we're not, the more kids that we looked at on the screen are not special education students.
Some of them are, yes.
We should know that. We should know where they are and what the problems are, and we didn't ask the question.
She has said that.
They're in those numbers.
Pardon?
Those enrollment numbers represent special ed. The enrollment numbers of the children represented by grade level.
This has been said multiple times.
That are residents of Oakland.
Also, asking the questions, forgive me, how would it change anything? We still have to pay for the kids. And I will direct the board to page 70 of the 80-page budget document.
Yeah, sorry, it's rather large.
But I looked through it really closely, and, I mean, forgive me, I do have a question about, I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, that's an advertised per pupil cost calculation. Per pupil over one, over the last year has not changed that much. It's like, forgive me, less than $1,000, but times, you know, then you add, it's not, that's an increase on the ones that we have, and then you add 35 more students, that's a lot of money, right? I also looked into like the local fair share policy in New Jersey, which I did not know a ton personally about, but I mean, that's kind of what Colleen was talking about, is the tuition goes up a certain amount, the state, forgive me, and if I'm saying any of this wrong, please let me know, looks at the property values of our borough and the income of our borough, and they do a calculation, and that's how they gave us $554,000 in the assumption that we are covering the rest. Is that correct? Okay, thanks.
They also gave us the permission to increase the local tax rate to 7% from the normal 2%, so that also is designed to cover that expense.
I would like to just quickly point out that we did drag this budget through the thorn bush and got it down to 5.4 after the initial 7, and that's when the, 5. what? 5.1%. So we, you know, the financial committee, we fought for it and tried, and then at the very last minute, we had the bombshell of the IEP enrollments that brought it right back up to 7. So technically, it would have probably been at 9% if we didn't, you know, put those efforts, and you were part of those efforts, so.
I was. And that, well, and that bombshell isn't in this budget. The last expenditure that we found out about a couple of weeks ago is not in this budget.
Correct, because the reductions that I identified at everybody's direction to get to the, as close to 4% as I could, I got it to 5.1, we all agreed, correct me if I'm wrong, please, we all agreed that those monies in July I would transfer to the tuition line to cover the child that just moved into town. Am I correct? Okay, that's what I thought.
It sounds like the bigger issue, though, you're talking about the state allowed us to do this, the state only gave us, is not us, it's the way the state is dealing with school. But that's a problem that's beyond here and has been that way for many years. We can't fix that today, we can't fix that tomorrow, and sitting here arguing about it isn't going to fix it either.
Okay, my question would still be, if the state had not given us the extra money, and the cost per pupil is misleading, because as I say, any student you add in this, oh, I'm sorry. Any student you add in this school is not going to cost us any significant amount of money. So the extra 35 students in Oakland really don't cost us any money. They're going to be dispersed over to grades, you're going to add one more kid in this class, you're going to add two more kids in this class, there's no cost involved. The Collingswood tuition, yeah, that's real money. At that point, you're talking, you're talking dollars. So the cost per pupil is misleading. The fact that it goes up doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to cost us more money because we're not going to expend any more, we're not going to hire a new teacher. We have 35 more kids, but we're not hiring a new teacher.
And we didn't hire a new teacher, and so.
Oh, I agree, that's right.
And so we have the same staffing number that we had last year, the cost to educate our students is more. That's the bottom line. And so we can, we can argue over the percentages, you can disagree, but the numbers are the numbers. The cost to educate our students has increased across all levels. Vendors cost more, student services cost more, the rollover with salaries and benefits, everything costs more than 2%, 3% or whatever. Health insurance, we saw a 4.9% increase just in health insurance. We saw, I'm not even sure the raw percentage in terms of transportation. We are not able to negotiate the mandated services that children require per their IEP, and we also don't get to dictate who comes and moves into our community. We have a legal fiduciary responsibility to provide services. And so whether a child comes in and their tuition is $10,000 or $100,000, we are still legally responsible for educating that child, and so those costs are all associated within this budget. We didn't increase staffing because we were able, on this campus, to absorb that level of increase of enrollment, but our tuition costs significantly exceeded the state-level funding. State gives you 35%. We're responsible for the 65% of the children who are here. And so when we're looking at our budget, the school, the Oakland team, went through the exact same review process that all the Collingswood schools went through. We're still doing zero-based budgeting. They started from zero. They identified what their absolute needs were, and what was submitted initially was an overall reduction of $3,000 before tuition came in, before transportation came in, before health benefits came in, before the rollover of salaries and benefits came in. And when you add all of those costs up, you're seeing an increase in overall expenditures. Not because we've added things, it's just part of inflation is that things cost more this year than they did last year. Some of the costs we've tried to control, some are beyond the scope of our control.
I quite agree, and I don't really disagree with anything you said there, but the general fund increased 14.3%. The items you mentioned, teacher salaries, health benefits, didn't increase by 14%. They increased by 3% or 3.5%. Health benefits at 4.9, I believe you said. They're all below the 14%, and yet we're still at 14%. So something else has increased a great deal.
Tuition.
All I'm saying is that I don't think we did a very good job, we did a very good job of looking at this budget and trying to identify areas that could be reduced, and I think it's putting a, an extreme burden on the residents of Oakland to pay for these items, and I think we could have done a better job, and that includes myself.
I just want to push back on something that you said, Bill, about the cost per pupil, because I want to understand it, so please tell me if I'm misunderstanding it. It is not, if we add three students to the third grade, we're not, it doesn't cost us more because we have the same teacher and we're not changing much. That's an average, right? If we had a $100,000 child who has, you know, an IEP and needs to go, so I just want to make that point, it's not as simple as three kids in each grade level.
The numbers that were shown, I don't know who put Beth Ann, I guess you put them together, the numbers that we showed with the 35 increases in Oakland, does that include special ed kids that may not actually be physically in Oakland?
Every resident child is accounted for on that screen, because that's who you're funded by.
Okay.
So it does include special ed.
Okay.
And special ed is counted in the grade band that they're in.
Okay, we'd be good to know what those numbers were, so we'd have a better idea. But I understand what you're saying now anyway, and what you're saying is correct.
It's in the 80-page.
Yeah, and the 80-page doc, the whole document that you guys have in the back is the enrollment projections, current year and what we're projecting for next year.
Anyone have anything else about the budget? Should we go into the committee of the whole in case there's other items to discuss? Do we have a motion to go into committee of the whole, or does everyone want to move, just move forward?
I was just going to say so moved, but it didn't.
I just wanted to mention something in committee of the whole, so if we.
Second.
Yeah. Moved and seconded, now we're in committee of the whole. So I just wanted to point out on our agenda, so I wanted to thank, A, the committee chairs for sending out the recaps after your committee meetings, but just to note that there were a couple of things that came in after the curriculum and personnel committee met that are on the agenda for tonight, so if anyone has any questions about those. So field trips were added, and as well as the staff renewals, so just wanted to point that out, that that was after the committee meeting. And I, for one, am very excited about the return of field trips, so thank you to the staff for doing that.
Having gone on one already, it was fantastic.
Does anyone have anything else for committee of the whole? Have a motion to come out of committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
We are now out of committee of the whole, and we will move to important dates. So we have the dates listed here, Take Your Child to Work Day is this Thursday, there's a PTA meeting next Tuesday.
It's at 6:30, Denise, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, yes, that is, correction, it is, PTA is at 6:30, not 6:00 p.m. On May 2nd.
I'll read that right there.
Thank you. Teacher Appreciation Week is coming up in early May, the fifth grade science assessment also be in May, there'll be a Muffins with Mom, that's a PTA event on May 12. They are looking for PTA dads to help run that event, so if any dads watching are interested. Spring playing, our next board meeting is May 16, and then the rest of the dates are listed there. So moving along to routine board business, I have a motion to approve the minutes from both our regular board meeting, that was on March 14, as well as our special board meeting on May, March 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is this roll call or all approval? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Now we will move to our, oh, there's no unfinished business at this time. We'll move to our first public comment. So if you have, now would be the time, if you have any comments about agenda items only, please stand, state your name, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
I'm Scott Valiant, 833 Columbia Boulevard, Oakland. I just have a question, a couple of questions. So when the average assessment of a house in Oakland, you guys have 165. I'm a, belong to the council in Oakland, our average assessment is 175. So how do you guys come up with this figure?
I got the abstract of ratables, I can go back and check it, but that's.
We just did our budget, we come up with 175, so I don't know how, you know, you guys count it. My other question, I have a couple of questions. All right, so my other question for next year, for state aid, this year you got $500,000. What's going to happen next year if you guys don't get that aid? And our tuition costs are going to be, they're not going to change, obviously, and we are at 7% this year. What kind of percentage are we going to be, I'm looking towards the future, what are we going to look at for next year? And an average home here in Oakland, I mean, I know people say, well, senior citizens can have their taxes froze. There's only eight citizens, seniors in this town that qualify for that. So you can't say if someone's a senior citizen, don't worry about them, because it just, the taxes get froze. There's only eight citizens in this town that taxes get froze. So at this point now, we're starting to push them out. And as a whole, I think between the township, the borough, and the school, I think we need to work together to try to figure this out, how are we going to save our citizens that actually built this town, and, you know, our pride for this town. We, I mean, when we did our, as a borough, when we did our budget, we knew, we expected that this big, large schooling could, so when we went through our budget line, we had in the back of our head, listen, you know, we got to watch this, we got to cut this, we got to do this. And our borough, you know, we went with $120, you know, average, you know, average homeowner in Oakland, which is not the average homeowner, and we cut a lot of things out, but we have to look at it too. We served the whole, we served the whole, every citizen in our town that benefited from our, our budget. You know, from the police departments, the EPW and all that. But looking at your budget, I mean, you're only really servicing the students that are in this building that go to Collinswood. So futurally, I think you guys maybe just try to work together to try to, you know, we stay as a whole. Because, I mean, I mean, we're a small, blue-collar town, and an average house right here in Oakland paying taxes is over $10,000. That's the average in this town. And going forward, with taxes going up, an average increase this year is up. Mrs. Salt said probably about $300, probably going to be up $500. And in this economy, that's a lot of money. I mean, 7%, I know inflation this year is up 7%. I don't think many people in this room got a raise of 7%. I know I didn't, you know. And, you know, and I worked two jobs, actually two jobs, kind of, to help just pay my taxes over there in this town. And my kids all went through the school system, and it was caved from nine. My kids didn't have the opportunity to go to Collinswood sixth grade, or, you know, I mean, they benefit from going over there and doing the sports and stuff like that, and it's a great system. Is there a way, I mean, if you guys down the future, are we thinking, I know Audubon's looking for people to join their school system, will we be looking like maybe to pull out of Collinswood and go, if we can get something cheaper, is that an option, tuition? I mean, because, I mean, right now, and I'll just quote unquote what I read in the paper, Collinswood's getting bad rap over here at high school, so we may not, you're saying people want to move here in our town, but then they also, if they're here for the future, they got to think about high schools too. And right now, and I mean, Collins is not looking good, the high school for the kids. You know, so that may put a little decrease on our, on our population here, because, you know, when I moved here, I was looking at that same thing, I didn't like that, I didn't like my kids coming here to ninth grade and having to go to Collinswood, but I knew, I grew up in Collinswood, I went through Collinswood School, it was a great school, and so I knew I had that option of me moving here. At the time, I couldn't afford moving, so that was my first choice, moved back to my hometown, but I couldn't afford the time to get a better house, it was very expensive. So, I mean, is there something we can, something down the line like that, that we can look at that? Can we look at other schools and see if we get better tuition rates for our students? Is that something, I mean, will anyone consider something like that? No answers, and I, now, part two of my second question is, who is, who is responsible for making sure that the 140 students that are paying at Collinswood are actually 140 kids that live here in Oakland? Okay, ah, okay, so that's a question I'm asking then. So who's responsible to make sure that the 140 students that are paying per student tuition line is actually a member of this town in Oakland? Because there are, that's the towns, Oakland has the same name series as us do, Collins has the same name series as Oakland does, and 08107 zip code serves a couple of communities. So, I mean, how do we, does anyone, does anyone track that? Does a kid, if a kid leaves halfway through school here, do we get to refund him half of that tuition?
I can't.
I know, but I'm just like looking, you know, I'm just like looking around and taking notes. I mean, do we get, do we get an upgrade, like every market here, how many students are actually enrolling? That may actually live in Oakland. Because now with technology, I mean, before you would get your report card mailed home, and you need to receive your report card, came back to the school undelivered, you knew, all right, let's check this out. Now everything's emails. I could, the parents who live in California, for all we know, and their kids going to school here. But, I mean, there's a, you know, I think there's a way, we have to track this now that we're paying per student, because that's matter. I personally know three kids off the high school right now do not live in Oakland, and are being used in Oakland address. I know four kids in middle school personally, because I coach over there, so I know where they live. I see their parents pick them up, I know where they live. And we're paying tuition fees, and they don't live in Oakland. And I personally know that, because I coach over, I coach two sports over there, and I know it. So, I mean, so I think there's something we're going to have to, now that we're paying for our students, we, as the board, as the community, we're going to have to, we have to take it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Section 8.01 is the enrollment report. March of 2022 enrollment was 267, March of 2023 is 275, the report is attached. 8.02, 03, and 04 are the school safety drill report, the suspension report, and the anti-bullying report. And 8.05 is the child study team report, and they are all attached.
Section 9 for the business administrator report.
All right, item 9.
Can I ask a question on, on that?
Sure, yes, sorry.
The, the enrollment report, that's only for the Oakland school. It shows 275, last year at this time was 267, yet we're told we have 35 more students here.
It's floating.
Well, can we explain that?
Could, is the number throughout, is the number throughout the year, so that?
Number increased in October, and then the number increased comparatively in November? So there's more, like, it's building from October, not necessarily just March.
The numbers on the screen are the numbers that are put in my budget projections that are in the budget document that you guys have. It's also based on the budget projections that the state had. The state actually projected 31 kids of an increase for Oakland in the state aid documents. I project 28. So that's, you know, and I did that after the October 15th count. So I think I did it probably, we submitted that in November, probably December, I did those enrollment numbers. So that's probably why.
If you look back month by month over the past couple of years, the numbers that you see now, the 275 or 263 are fairly typical. There's no 35 student increase or change, e- even in total.
All right, so, and item 9.01 is your listing of your March 2023 monthly budget transfers. 9.02 is your March 2023 Board Secretary and Treasurer's Report, and your cash reports, and all the related financial statement backup. 9.03 is your April 2023 purchase orders that have been issued. And in 9.04 is a listing of the warrants that will be paid tomorrow morning pending approval this evening.
Okay, section 10 for the finance, buildings, and grounds report, Mr. Tabey.
Thank you. We're looking for approval for items 10.01 to 10.10. That includes 10.1, which is the review of budget transfer, or the approval of budget transfers. 10.02 and 10.03 is approval of certifications of no over expenditures. 10.04 is approval of the secretary and treasurer reports. And 10.05 and 10.06 is review of purchase orders and warrants. New business, we have 10.07, which is the approval of the BCIP JIF, the Brolyton County Insurance Pool Joint Insurance Fund. It's a mouthful, that Dr. McDowell spoke of during the budget presentation. 10.08 is approval of Phoenix Advisors LLC as district's disclosure agent and independent registered municipal advisor. 10.09 is for approval of D and T translation services for English.
Yeah, I have those, I have those backwards, yeah.
10.0, oh, 10.10, yeah, you're right. 10.10 is, yeah. Yeah, 10.10 is review of, or approval of D and T translation services for English, Arabic interpretation during parent meetings. And 10.11 is the use of facilities request for the Collinswood High School indoor color guard. Looking for approval of items 10.01 to 10.10, 10.11, sorry.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, we've been seconded, are there any questions on any of these items? Okay, on a vocal.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Okay, moving on to section 11, Mr. Schaefer for curriculum report.
All right, so items 11.01 are a couple of field trips that Denise mentioned earlier that were added. These items were added after committee met. That's a field trip to the Camden Aquarium and to Johnson's Corner Farm, so we're looking at approval for those trips. Item 11.02, we're looking for approval for the placement of a couple of students on home instruction. Item 11.03, we're looking for the placement of a student that was on home instruction, then will be being placed in Brookfield Elementary for the remainder of the school year for some special services, you can see the costs that are associated with that there. Item 11.04, we're looking to approval of issuing a contract for administrative staff, which would be Ms. Bolden. Item 11.05, we're looking for approval of a contract to be issued for our non-tenured administrative staff, and that would be Ms. Soloway. Item 11.06, we're looking for approval on contracts to be administered to the following tenured faculty that you see listed there. Item 11.07, we're looking for approval of contracts issued to the non-tenured faculty that you see listed in front of you. Item 11.08, looking for approval of contracts to be issued to tenured office service, office service personnel. You see the two names listed there, Ms. Funk and Ms. Sillafont. Item 11.09, we're looking for approval for the following substitutes and tutors. You see the three individuals there, and their, item 11.10, there are currently no travel expenses at this time, so we're looking for approval of items 11.01 through 11.09.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, are there any questions on any of those items? Okay, on a vocal.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
And section 12, come to the school community relations and policy committee, Mrs. Marmian.
Hi, so item 12.01 is the PTA liaison report. The PTA met on April 4th. They welcomed back Ms. Bolden, who had been gone for a while, we're very happy to have her back. They talked about new ways to bridge the gap between fifth grade and middle school, and that they have new safety patrol, a new school council, cafeteria supervisors. So it's a great new program that I've been hearing a lot of good things about. There were a ton of events, which we've talked about in our meetings, but some of the, I mean, you saw some of the upcoming events and important dates. Working on the yearbook, the theme is the beach. And then one of the biggest things is that there is a nominating committee, because there are openings on the PTA board for president, vice president, membership and corresponding secretary, and treasurer for a one-year term. I guess that is about it. And I think we heard that fifth grade promotion is going to be on June 15th, is that correct? Okay. The next meeting is May 2nd, so next, coming right up at 6:30, as we said in the important dates. Item 12.02 is the OMACAC report, which I'll be happy to share. OMACAC met on Zoom on March 27th. They recently had a site visit from the county coordinator, Bonnie Taft and Adam Schur attended, and they were told that they'd be getting $2,250 in additional funding. The board reviewed the budget, going over what the borough will be contributing, confirmed that they will be spending all of this year's budget, but not yet. But it will be all kind of happening in the last couple of months of the budget year. They are contributing to Red Ribbon Week at OPS and the high school, a BMX assembly, possibly a fifth grade dance, but I'm not sure if that's still happening since this meeting, the Week of Respect, basketball, Oakland Soccer Club, and Little League. There was, the final gym night of the year was on March 24th. There were 35 children, three counselors, and five chaperones. They approved supporting the PTA Spring Fling on May 13th. They're actually going to be providing bicycles for the raffle, and it's a huge fundraiser for the PTA. And they confirmed that they will be going forward with bringing back the color run, which has not been done in person since 2019, and was done virtually in 2020. We're just waiting for the Eagles' schedule to possibly align with the town picnic. It's an important thing, let me tell you, somebody who's been involved with the color run. Okay, and then moving on to item 12.03, Mr. Stotts with the Collinswood board report.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Last night's quarter, I'll try and condense this a little bit more than the meeting I actually went last night. It was an interesting meeting. It started at 6:30, there was an executive, no, there was an executive session for a disciplinary hearing. The committee of the whole discussed at great length a proposed shared service agreement with the Collinswood PD for school safety services, very similar to a school resource officer, but the point was made that it is not a school resource officer, there are differences. The job description for that is to be developed. Oh, and also, the committee of the whole discussed the budget, which we presented on May 8th at Collinswood at a special meeting. The public comment was another marathon issue. Primarily, a number of parents were opposed to a revised policy on the entrance age for kids. They, they wanted to be involved in the decision whether or not they. They, they wanted to be involved in the decision whether or not they, uh, they sent their kids to school or kindergarten, uh, at age five, or whether they retained them for a period, uh, less than a year, when I say a period. Uh, also discussed was the need to support, uh, the teachers in Collinswood, uh, with some of the turmoil that's been going on. Uh, there was concern expressed over, and, uh, the, an apparent lack of leadership in the district, and they, uh, oh, two were opposed to, uh, uh, the police officer in the school, uh, they didn't think that was a good idea. Uh, the superintendent presented, uh, his standard report and added a section, uh, of, uh, all the good things that, that are happening in Collinswood. Uh, and that took a little time, thank goodness, uh, although last night probably wasn't the best time to have an additional, uh, additional time spent. Uh, but it was an interesting report. They approved, uh, various, uh, financial reports and paying of the bills. Uh, they approved the, uh, above shared service agreement, uh, by a six to five vote for the, uh, uh, school safety, uh, services, uh, shared service agreement. Uh, they accepted four teachers' resignations in the high school. They approved, uh, various, uh, athletic trainers, and I can't read my writing for what the other one is, uh, but they approved some additional personnel. Uh, they approved agreement with, uh, Rowan for, uh, intern practicum program for health and science. They approved various field trips. They approved six policies on first reading, including the above, uh, policy on, uh, age of admission. They approved five policies on second reading, and they approved three resolutions, uh, which were on bomb threats, lockdowns, and active shooter. Uh, the second public comment section, there was one parent that, uh, asked that, uh, Mr. Lurch be, uh, replaced, that the position be replaced, and not that the workload be distributed between, between the other teachers. She didn't think that was fair. Uh, and, uh, another one, the, uh, entrance age, uh, mentioned at the second agreement. And the meeting ended promptly at ten o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Stotts. Um, item twelve point oh four is a report from the Oakland Education Foundation, Mr. McMillan.
Um, yeah, so I haven't spoken with Kim about any meetings that upcame, but, uh, during our budget, uh, discussion, um, I know they had some, uh, funds that were pending out, so I tried to get, uh, my head wrapped around that. And it looks like OEF has about ten thousand dollars in funding, um, of that, two to three, they want to save for scholarships, um, seven or eight is for OPS initiatives. And, uh, and Kim also stated that three to four thousand of that could be for the Chromebooks and Chrome carts, or the Chromebook carts that, um, were requested. Um, and then Adam also said that they are still a five oh one C three, that is, uh, can raise money for anything that OPS needs. So it's just a matter of, uh, maybe using them to the best that we can. That's all I got.
I just want to say that I think that it's, you know, for a small community, that OEF can do that, um, and really help the budget as it did, is, is pretty commendable, so just a little editorial there. Um, item twelve point oh five, um, policies of first read, we have five here. Um, twenty-four, twenty-three by Lingwell and ESL Education Revised, twenty-four, twenty-five Emergency Virtual or Remote Instruction Revised, fifty-two hundred is a revision of the attendance policy. Eighty-one, forty, revision of student enrollments, and eighty-three, thirty, student records revision. Item twelve point oh six is, um, the abolishment of one policy, twenty-four, thirty-two on school publications. Um, so we are seeking approval for items twelve point oh one through twelve point oh six.
Um, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right, honor vocal.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Now we move to section thirteen, this is our final public, um, comment section. If you have anything, um, this could be about any item, not just agenda items. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Devin Bergen. I am a local soccer coach and a resident here in Oakland. And I just had a, a wonderful question for seeing if there was any plans to maintain and upkeep the facilities that we have behind the school here. Um, it's kind of strange that after such a long break due to COVID, that our field goes in such poor conditions. And it's really, at times, unsafe for some of the student athletes to be back there and utilizing these fields. We actually have a number of, um, you know, local volunteers, whether they're coaches or parents, that are, are starting to come out of pocket with, um, whether it's grass seed or supplies to help prepare some of the dugouts, and really upkeep it. I, I do, I am aware that there is a charge that we are, um, as a Little League or as a soccer club, are charged. And it, and it's tough for us to even keep home games here at times because of, of some of the conditions of the field. So I just kind of want to bring that out and see if there's any plans to actually give our kids, uh, a reasonable field space, since it is the only field space on planet we have access to.
Thank you very much. Make note of that?
Yep, I am.
I think that's it, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Can I, I just have two quick things. Um, I mean, I, I was, I'm hopeful that we can get some answers to Mrs. Valianti for her question, so, but I guess that wasn't said publicly, but, um, and then, the other thing I did, I, I was, I love numbers, and I was really curious about what you were saying. Uh, I went back to the last June principals' report, or superintendent's report on enrollment, and compared to March, it's a difference of twenty-four, if my math is correct. So that's an increase in twenty-four students. That's quick math, that's not, I'm, I'm just making note, and I'm not good at math, at all. So, but I, I, I was able to see a difference, and I can show you, so I just wanted to make that note. That's all.
Yeah, I wanted to note too, on that, um, in the budget presentation, the preschool, pre-K number is a flat number, and then the increases in K through five. And so I'm just assuming that it's as pre-K students move up, because that pre-K number is not, the pre-K number is not fluctuating, right?
You only have so many classrooms, right?
Yeah, so it's not, um, but, yeah, that's just an assumption of mine. That's right, and you'll see, like...
Sorry, if you have a large fifth grade, then your middle school, like, you can kind of almost see the wave. So we had a lot of kids from eighth grade go over to the high school, and then we had the increase in, so we're riding that wave. Something happens between, um, ninth grade and twelfth grade, where we, we lose some kids, I don't know if they go to county, I don't know if they move out, but, um, yeah.
Uh, Denise, the preschool numbers, it's sixty are the number of seats we have available. I don't believe we have anywhere near that number, I think we're, we're closer to fifty, as far as actual students.
That's the projected number, so what's, again, what I, what I put on that screen is what's in our budget projections. When we sent the preschool, um, budget and program plan to the state, we had to project, like, the number of kids we could serve, so we had to match what we sent. We project sixty kids, because we have sixty seats, so, just so, we're not lying.
I'm, I'm sorry, that's part of that, we have to project, if we project sixty?
We have to let the department enter how, how many seats we have.
Okay.
So we project, they're funding sixty seats, right? So we project sixty seats, so what's on the screen, just so everything is in agreement, sixty for preschool.
Okay, is there any, any audit at the end, if we don't hit sixty?
They do not, I have not, please, I hope the state's not looking, but they don't, they have not asked for our preschool money back yet, if we don't, like, I think we had fifty-two or fifty-three.
I hope we don't.
I don't think they come back and say, give us money back for eight kids.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so.
How many classes do, does Collinswood rent for preschool?
Three, right? Collinswood rents for preschool? Yeah.
So I know they were looking at churches over in Collinswood that we, uh, we don't, is that in place to take the classes from here and send them back in Collinswood?
No. Yeah. Yep, we are, the elementaries in Collinswood are blowing up in size, yeah.
So do we actually have a contract with them to stay here?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Correct. Yep, you're welcome.
Bill, can I ask you something about, um, the board meeting last night, from your report that you just gave? So you said two were opposed to having, um, a police officer, you said, at the high school? Is that what?
No, no, I'm sorry, I may have said that, if I did, it's, I was mistaken. The object of the police officer is he'll circulate between all of the Collinswood campuses, although he will be primarily at the high school.
Okay, and what's the outcome of that? Is that going to happen, or?
It was approved last night.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one final note, Phil, I'd be remiss, so, kind of, wearing two hats tonight, I think on behalf of, of Collinswood Middle School and, and as a board member, um, just our condolences for the passing of, of Joe Lurch, uh, the band teacher at Collinswood High School, which happened very suddenly and unexpectedly. So our, our thoughts and condolences to, uh, the family of Joe Lurch.
Thank you. Okay, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.